Fine, it's fine.
I'd like to welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Delrayo City Council. Can I roll call please?
Councilmember Louie. Councilmember Halleck.
Presence.
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Donaldson.
Here. Please join me in the pleasure of reading. Next is public comment. General public comment must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of a city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. There'll be a time limit of no more than three minutes per speaker. Public comment is now.
This is me.
Hey, and would you please state your name? Laura's still trying to get, learn everyone's name, so it would be very helpful.
Okay. My name is Scott Morgan. I live at nine four two Angelo Way, right next to the park. I've been a resident of Delray Oaks for over thirty years. I'd like to say no one knows the park better than I do because I look right at it every day. I have probably four items to discuss at this time. I've been reading about, um, I will read all the city council minutes and items. And I thought I read something about applying for FEMA grants due to flooding. And if there's any type of flooding or FEMA grants going on, I'm going to ask everybody to remember there's eight homes along the Royal Delray. And I can guarantee you that all eight homes sustained damage during the floods.
Right.
Um, things are going crazy in the counties and basically not a peak. So we, there's eight homes down there. I guarantee you, if we, we all sustain damage and to do it by the book, each homeowner would probably have to spend over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's been my idea, probably for as long as I've lived here, we need to get a grant from the Frog Pond all the way to Safeway to take care of any erosion-related items. Everyone sees that from the Frog Pond up to General Jim Lor is maintained almost every winter. I'm not saying clear cut decree, but there's certain items that need to be taken care of. I don't know who does that upstream, but it'd be nice, and I can see the cities in action right now, taking care of the land on city property. But again, there's eight homes along the Royal Delray and it can be pretty scary, believe me. So I'm gonna change that topic. And I'd like to talk to you guys about pressure-treated lumber and any future handrails that are gonna be built. From the stairs, from the park up to Villa Verde, you can see there's some sort of pressure-treated railing there. And I guarantee you that if a redwood top cap was used, every older person and young child would thank you for that. If there's any future railings that are gonna be built with the bike path and all that, let's try and make it so the top cap is at least soft and not a, I'll just say it, a crusty old piece of pressure-treated. Pressure-treated is probably the lowest grade of lumber there is, Douglas fir, and then it goes out to be treated, so. I think everybody here might know someone that knows something about wood, so if we could use a nice top cap, it would be very cool. Um, I'd like to propose that any crossing along the waterway, the bridges, would have some sort of sign, no dumping leads to the bay. I had these made myself. I had a turtle and a salmon put on them because I think sea otters and sea lions have a nice representation. So any railing that goes across the creek, we can make sure people don't put, you know, bad things in it. So, I'm probably getting close to three minutes, so I'm gonna sit here for a minute, gather my thoughts and see if there's something else. I'm out? Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Hey, we, I see no public comment, any more public comment here, but the city manager does have public comment that he'd like to read.
Thank you, Mayor. We received this today and were asked to read it. Uh, I am unable to attend city council on last Tuesdays, so I send this communication hoping that it will be read aloud. It is very sad to see the trees be removed and to experience the night lighting being added to the city all area police department and canyon slash park area. While I understand the safety concerns, I ask that more attention be paid to limiting the night lighting in those areas that light up the canyon so that residents can enjoy the stars, the natural light of the moon, and not have to spend a small portion on blackout curtains. Thank you respectfully, Mayor O'Donnell.
Okay, any other public comment? Seeing and hearing none, public comment is now closed. Our first proclamation is from Representative Dawn Addison's office in honor of Councilmember Bill Ragsville. And here to present that proclamation is Alexis Garcia Arizona from Stone Addis and Bob, Alexis.
Oh, sorry, uh, Mayor, Senator Council, good manager. Uh, I guess Alexis here from the office of Assemblymember Dawn Addison for Defense Assembly this very, and we have a formal resolution on the council member, but also Senator John Laird will be called signed this assembly resolution for, uh, a good friend of all ours, uh, Councilman Bill Ragsville, and I do know that, I was told that someone from his family was in attendance, and I'm not sure if they are, and I'd love for them to join me up here as I read this, this formal resolution presented to the family. So I'm happy to see Assembly, uh, we're providing this resolution to the warehouse. On August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, the city of Delrayo, Delrayo's life has been passing to the honorable Bill Ragsville, Colonel. Member of the Delrayo City Council and one of the most dynamic and renowned public officials ever to serve the city. Whose good deeds earned him with respect and admiration of his colleagues and countless individuals whose lives, whose lives he touched. And whereas after serving on Delrayo's planning commission of twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three, Bill Ragsville was appointed to the Delrayo City Council in twenty twenty three. And during his tenure, he represented a community with dedication, various boards and commissions, putting monitoring on water and Delrayo's budget and finance committee. And whereas having worked monitoring on water for years, Bill served as a maintenance supervisor and helped ensure that monitoring the national marine sanctuary protected wastewater. After retiring from monitoring on water, he acted as a maintenance supervisor at Santa Heavenly Math School for seven years. And whereas in other service in the local community, Bill volunteered his time with Ariel theatrical. Where he built sets, served as a debt captain and actively enrolled as needed in the mission to hold membership on its board directors. And dedicated to his faith, he was, he was an active member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of the United Church. And whereas a devoted husband and father, Bill Ragsville, who is two daughters, can't celebrate his legacy. His wife, his daughter's, his wife's student, his daughter Sydney, Cara, Darma. And his extended family members, dear friends, admirers, the Delrayo's here. Now therefore be it resolved by Assemblymember Dawn Addison and Senator John Laird that they express their deepest sympathy at the cast, at the casting of the honorable Bill Ragsville. And by this resolution, memorialize his praise, rest his record, personal, professional, public, civic engagement, as well as love and devotion he shared with his family and friends.
You know, when we were thinking about what we would like to do for Bill at the city, I reached out to Susan and she told me she would like it to be like, and somewhat informal, you know, telling fun stories, connection stories about how Bill brought value to the city, how he helped people, and also the, the sacrifices that he made. Um, and you know, when I thought about it, it Susan, when you, when you told me that, and I thought of life, I, I thought of the times that I spent with Bill where we would go get a beer, um, either at one of the local breweries or at the house. And you know, I, it, it, it was always, uh, kinda crazy to me that being such a big guy, he loved light beer. So anytime we would go someplace, he would always ask for the lightest beer that, that they had. Um, kind of just go to. And I really learned a lot about Bill during those times I was together with him. Probably more so than our time formally here on the council. But the thing that sticks out in my mind with Bill is that he brought that common sense to the council. He did it in, in really everything that he did. And we talked with him, he was so down-to-earth. And, and he had that ability, whether it's a finance meeting or an agenda item that we were looking at, to, to kind of break it down to its very roots and provide that, that common sense. And I know he helped a lot of people in the community. But Susan, I would just like to tell you, he helped me as a person. When I looked at the adversity that he faced and how he faced that, he was, he, he's such a great example to me on a personal level as well. And you know, you look at the sacrifices he made, when he was appointed to the council, he was already battling cancer. And you know, a lot of people in that situation would say, hey, I need to focus on all my personal stuff. And that's it. That's all I got time for, and I, and I just wanna do everything, uh, personal level that I had planned to do, that maybe I didn't have the time to do. And Bill made the commitment to his community at that point. And it's just so incredible to me that in that situation, that he would dedicate himself to his community is just incredible. Um, and you know, I, I just respect that so much. And from a personal standpoint, it was an honor to know him. And from a council member's standpoint, it was an honor to serve with him, really was. So what I would like to do is allow the council, um, to say a few words and also the city manager and the city attorney, and then I would like to bring it out to the, to the public if, if there's something that, that you all would like to share. So with that, council member Shirley.
Yeah. Bill wasn't only a council member, but he's my friend. I knew Bill before he became a council member, but it was mostly through his wife. He said, once he was appointed, then Bill, I had more opportunities and reasons to talk. What I appreciated about Bill is that he had the ability to be many things. He could show a rough exterior when needed, but he also had a softness and a kindness that came through the way he lived and the work he did as a representative of the city. So much the way he tackled his illness. Bill had a headstrong nature and after that, he had a headstrong nature. And after doing his homework, he knew where he stood. He was a down-to-earth guy. He was always honest with his thoughts. He gave you comfort both as a friend and as a colleague, to know exactly where he was coming from and how he arrived at his decisions. His forthright feature helped build a trust I was desperately seeking. During Bill's town council, he passed, he helped us pass Portag, a finalized Portag. We passed our fifth cycle housing element, and he brought cupcakes for dedication. Um, we adopted our six-cycle housing element, passed our no smoking and tobacco retail license licenses. He was an important member of our city finance committee. And this year, Bill was thrilled to serve as our representative on M1 Water as it felt like a second. Bill was also a huge supporter of the LGBTQIA+ community. I was excited for the possibility of sustainable development in corridor that also incorporated wildlife corridors and Portag. Bill was usually the first council member here for our meetings. And I love that time to check in with him to find out how he was doing, or to see how his wife and kids are doing. I will miss having Bill next to me on the dais. That's his presence was always comforting. And I appreciate that the rides he gave me after our meetings, I wouldn't have to walk down the dark. When we appointed Bill, he did not hide the fact that he had cancer. He didn't know how much time he had left, but the time he did have, he chose to spend it and serve us to the city. Even through his chemo treatments, when he wasn't feeling well, he was here, helping us make good decisions for the residents of Delray Oaks. He was proud of his work, and I feel so lucky to have served with him. I will deeply miss my friend.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Louie.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you even thus as well for letting us give this opportunity to talk uh, in memory of our friend Bill. So, uh, so tonight, uh, we gather, uh, not only as a council above as a community, uh, to remember and honor the memory of Councilmember Bill Ragsville. Bill, uh, joined us about two years ago in the council, but in that time, he made a lasting impact. He brought such thoughtful, logical insights into our council discussions. Ideas I often found myself marveling at, as they were things that I wouldn't have thought of myself. So beyond his wisdom and contributions, Bill had a way of bringing light and joy to our meetings and to our lives. I will never forget those moments when he showed up in his signature tie-dye shirts and his happy, happy face shirt. They were just colorful, but they were a reflection of his vibrant personality, a reminder of his joy, and a reminder for all of us to embrace life with the same color, dedication, and energy. Every time I saw him in one, my day instantly brightened. We have lost a kind, compassionate, and dedicated council member. But more than that, we've lost a dear friend. His kindness, thoughtfulness, and unique spirit will be missed by all of us. But his legacy of service to our city will endure. To Bill's family, uh, Susan, and to Tara and Sydney and Darma, thank you for sharing your husband, your dad with us. He made Delray Oaks a better place, and we are all better for having known him. Bill, you will truly be missed, but your life will forever remain in our hearts. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, John.
That was.
Councilmember Alec.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Bill Ragsdale, Colonel. Brought a, a certain creativity and intelligence and a calculable critical thinking to this council, uh, that landed, um, certain benefits to the progress and the work on the path forward that the city does. I always appreciated his lightheartedness and joviality and sense of humor on the streets and here in chambers. And he was able to exhibit these, these qualities despite the adversities he was facing, is such an amazing example of fortitude. That he was able to carry on selfless service to his city is just absolutely remarkable. Uh, he was a gambling man. You've heard about the cupcakes. What we didn't hear is that he lost a bet on our housing element being so expeditiously presented by our planning consultant. But sometimes a cupcake is not just a cupcake. What it did was afford us time, uh, in the lobby among community and council to, uh, to mingle and, and be friends above and beyond, uh, business conducted here. And I'd run into him at Safeway on occasion. And it turns out we both had infinity for Gierbilly Dark Chocolate with hazelnut bars, big ones. Sorry, I might be revealing too much. I got the impression that, uh, he wasn't really supposed to have them. But we came and afforded ourselves a little sweet indulgence once in a while. And so that for me, in my evenings, when I'm winding down, I've got Snappin' and some dark chocolate, I'll be sure to remember him again. Uh, may God rest his soul and hold him in all of his hands, and my deepest condolences to his life and death.
Thank you, Mary. City manager?
Yeah, so Bill and I started at the city at about the same time we started building. And the, the first year and a half was on Zoom, so I never actually got to meet Bill in person until he was, well, until we were sworn in to the city council that December. And then he, uh, put his name in the app, so he appointed to the city council. That's when I got to know Bill. Um, I think you're all hearing the same thing. One of the things about Bill is he was a big, kind of intimidating guy. As soon as you met him, he's a teddy bear. He was cushy. Uh, and he was, he was a lot of fun to talk to. I really looked forward to having my updates. I know a lot of times he couldn't make it because he wasn't feeling well with chemo and everything. Um, but, uh, we, we had a good time. We got to know each other. Uh, as a city manager, and as a guy who grew up in public works and likes to get stuff done. Uh, I really appreciated Bill's, um, well, his detailed and technical and, uh, knowledge of what it takes to get projects done and understanding public works. It was great when he came in because I didn't have to educate him about public works projects. Frequently, he educated me on timelines and money and and I, I'd always love it when I sit with the city council member and I try to softball it for them and tell them, oh, it's gonna take this long, it's gonna cost as much. He goes, no, it's not. It's gonna be twice as long, it's gonna cost twice the price. It's great. I didn't have to BS with them. Um, but I, you know, I, I, uh, I've been accused of being a little bit of a smart aleck. And Bill and I, uh, bonded a little bit on that because he has that same kind of sense of humor that I have. And, uh, the, the thing that Bill did when I knew, okay, I'm gonna really like this guy, is Karen sends out every month a reminder to the council to, uh, get in their written, their written council number reports if, if they want submit one for, for this agenda. And, uh, for the first few months, Bill wouldn't do it, wouldn't do it, wouldn't do it. And so one time he, he said to me, he's like, well, why is Karen keep sending me this? I'm not gonna do it. And I said, Bill, you know, it's good, it's good. It's good for you to tell your constituents what you're doing. You do a lot of stuff. You set a lot of commissions, a lot of awards, you know, just do one. And so he said, fine, I'll do one. And he did it. And it was one sentence, right Karen? One sentence. I got a paraphrase. I'm not quoting it exactly. It said, I attended a lot of meetings. That was Bill. Yeah, and that was when I knew, okay, I'm gonna really like this guy. So Susan, uh, really condolences for your loss. It was a big shock for all of us. I know no greater shock than it was for you. Um, and he will be missed.
Thank you, John. City manager. Susan, I just want to extend my condolences, you know, before there was the tie-dye and the hat base, there was Catalina Tennis. And that was during those, those Zoom meetings where I, I didn't know Bill, but he was on screen there and got to know him, uh, during public comment. Uh, and then when he was appointed to council, uh, as council member, Shirley said, uh, you know, we're sort of, we're sort of this swing of the table over here, we be here early. Um, and I really enjoyed talking to Bill about going up to the captain. Fascinating, he would, you know, talking about going up there and getting everything ready for the family to be up there. And some would make it, some would come and go. He, he just loved, you could just tell, he just loved taking care of, of his family, his group. Um, you know, and, and I just really admired that, uh, and professionally of course up here. You know, he always knew what was going on, got right down to the, to the point, um, you know, came right up to speed with everything that was going on. So my sincerest condolences, um, and, and just want to let you know the pleasure it was to know it. Thank you, Alex. Okay, what I'd like to do now is open it up to the public. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward up to the podium. So, uh, nothing really out of the description, but we all, since humor, you will thought and drink your life, nobody just write to the media stuff, it's common sense, we all that stuff. My perspective is just a little different though, because I taught all three of his daughters in middle school. If you haven't had Bill's stories yet, I'm standing by. You know what? Real. And what I'm gonna tell you is that Bill was like that for all those years of middle school, and that's pretty extraordinary for the middle school parents that I typically deal with, very few of them are able to keep that even kill, that perspective, that sense of humor through those years. And Bill did it for all of them. And it was, it was fun to see, fun to deal with. It was just, uh, it was very, uh, very rewarding to see how he dealt with the girls through those years. Much like all the great stuff here at the city, I watched him doing with the girls and his family. And it was, uh, very, it was just impressive. It was really nice to see. So there's that other side of Bill that maybe not everyone got to see. That was Bill. What you see, what we all see, what we all talk about, that's Bill. All right, thanks, Siri.
So Bill passed on to the other realm to the song Taking Down Country Roads. Now, to a team, Mr. DePiano, for an excellent performance, for a show. But because of his work, he gave so many and he can engage, he just poured into our house. While he was passing, I can't surely just know he, she was a rock star. She, she drove my kids back and forth to my kids' cars. John, who is gonna help me sell vehicles. And Karen has been my real secretary. Um, accepting all the cards and letters and flowers. It's been overwhelming. I also want to put a big shout out to Seaside Fire. I just really don't know what I would have done without them. I called and they were there in five minutes, ten minutes. You know, Bill was a big guy. It took about four months to move it down. And they did whenever I called. It was amazing things to say. And Ron Pucci also came one time and helped with Bill to bring it out. So I, blessings, blessings, blessings. But I can surely came over and he tried, but we did it. Uh, anyway, so many people have happened, sat by in the club, he was passing out, or sacrificed some letters and flowers and deals. And all those things afterwards, and I have to say, I've been very overwhelmed and I've not gotten back to anyone. But I wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you because I really felt so supported by the city of Delray Oaks. I really felt so supported by the city of Delray Oaks. I think this is my city. I grew up here. I grew up in the club. I'm very, very attached. And. I can feel Big Bill smiling down on all of you and all the support that all of us have been saying.
There anyone else that would like to say any words? Okay, thank you so much, um, to everyone. Thank you, um. Out here on the dais for all your wonderful comments and, and also out in the public. Okay, we're gonna make the transition to our next proclamation, which is a proclamation for. The Stormwater Awareness Week. And I'm gonna read part of that proclamation. It says, whereas the water quality of our local water resources are of vital importance to the sustainable communities and to the healthy. Safe, uh, the safety and wellbeing of people in this community. And stormwater is increasingly considered a resource in our community. Where every drop counts. As demonstrated by the contributions as a source water for the Monterey One Water Pure Water Monterey Project. Whereas the city of Delray Oaks will participate in annual stormwater awareness training activities. Therefore, be it resolved that city council does hereby proclaim. The week of September twenty-third to the twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-four as Stormwater Awareness Week. Okay, our final proclamation is for National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas our founding. Whereas since our founding, our nation has drawn strength from the diversity of our people. And with faith and, and passion, a sturdy work ethic and profound devotion to family. Hispanics help carry forward our legacy as a vibrant beacon of opportunity for all. Whether their ancestors were here for generations or they are among the newest members of our American family. They represent many countries and cultures. Each adding their own distinct and dynamic perspective to our country's history. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month pays tribute to the generations of Hispanic Americans. Its ancestors come from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean. And Central and South America. And have positively influenced and enriched our nation and society. And in nineteen sixty-eight, President Lyndon Johnson. Implemented the observance of Hispanic Heritage Week. And this observation was expanded to its current thirty-day period from September fifteenth to October fifteen. And enacted into public law under President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight. And September fifteenth was chosen as the starting point for the commemoration because it's the anniversary of independence. Of five Hispanic countries. Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala. Honduras and Nicaragua, who all declared their independence in eighteen twenty-one. In addition, Mexico, Chile and Belize celebrated their independence days on September sixteenth. Eighteenth and the twenty-first respectively. And whereas Hispanic Americans continue to enrich our community with cultural, educational and political influences. That can be, that can be seen in all aspects of our lives. And National Hispanic Heritage Month is an important reminder. Of how much strength we draw as a nation. From our, from our immigrant roots and our value as a nation of immigrants. Now therefore, I Scott Donaldson, Mayor of the City of Delray Oaks, do hereby proclaim. September fifteenth through August fifteenth as National Hispanic Month in the city of Delray Oaks. And I urge all citizens to embrace the diversity that strengthens us. And continue to striving to ensure the American dream is within reach for generations of Hispanics to come. Signed this twenty-fourth day of September twenty twenty-four. Okay. Our next item is a presentation and it's from Community Health Services. And Robin. You're up.
Good evening, city council. Thank you, Mayor Donaldson. And hello to everyone else who's here and maybe watching by closer to TV. My name is Robin McCray and I'm the CEO of Community Human Services. And I thank you for this opportunity to make this presentation tonight. I was looking around um before I came up here. I remembered that um. The Community Human Services Board of Directors had their board meeting here many years ago. It was actually where they had the board meeting and had met in closed session. And came out and announced that they were offering me an employment contract. And that was in nineteen ninety-four. So um I've been with the agency for thirty years. Is that right? That makes it thirty years. And this year we celebrated our fifty-fifth, or we are celebrating our fifty-fifth anniversary of providing community human, or providing community services. To a community. So community really is at the heart of who we are and what we do. And so I'd like to give you a little bit of, of an idea of what we do at Community Human Services. So um, are you gonna help me, Karen, with the presentation?
Thank you for getting it up there for you.
So as I mentioned earlier, we were established in nineteen sixty-nine. Um, by cities and school district, or actually by grassroots effort of parents uh who were concerned about. Kids, the rising use of kids' um drug use. And in nineteen seventy-two, we were adopted by Peninsula Cities and School Districts that formed the JPA. Uh, in response to a critical grand jury report. Saying that the community needed to do a coordinated effort to address drug use and mental health. So our mission is to provide. High-quality mental health, substance abuse and homeless services to the residents of Monterey County, now that they've reached their full potential. And um, at the, Delray Oaks was a founding member of the Dry Powers Agency. You may recall the name Lonnie Ayers. He was. The mayor of Delray Oaks and he signed the, the agreement on behalf of Delray Oaks. Um, so the other cities and school districts that currently belong to the Dry Powers. Are Carmel, Delray Oaks, Marina, Monterey, Pacific Grove, Salinas, Sand City and Seaside. And the school districts include Carmel Unified, Monterey Peninsula Unified, Monterey Peninsula College. North Monterey County, Monterey County Office of Education, Santa Rita Union School District and Salinas High School District. So in keeping with our mission, the three areas of our service include substance abuse services, homeless services and mental health services. And I'm gonna give you a little overview next. Of the, um, where we're located and what, what programs we offer. So in Salinas, we have a family service center. We have off-mane clinic, which provides a variety of drug treatment programs, including medication assisted treatment. We have outpatient drug treatment center in Salinas. We have a Salinas Valley Youth Outreach for Homeless Youth. Um, Drug and Alcohol Intervention Services for Youth, which we call by its acronym D A Z Y. And Substance Abuse Prevention Program is based out of Salinas, but it's located in various schools throughout the county. And then new to our programming in Salinas. Is Safe Place Salinas, which is a youth homeless navigation and resource center. And the Share Center. We just recently assumed operations of the Salinas County. Um, operated her own um shelter in Salinas, under that shelter. On the peninsula, our services in Monterey include Schuman Heart House, which is a shelter for homeless women and families with children. Safe Place Youth Shelter and Navigation Center. Safe Passage, which is transitional supportive housing for homeless youth. Monterey Peninsula Street Outreach Program, which provides outreach to homeless youth across the entire peninsula. Another outpatient drug treatment center. Um, Seaside Family Service Center. Uh, Casa de Noche Buena, which is a homeless shelter for homeless women and families with children. Genesis Residential Center, which is residential drug treatment and a special program for pregnant and parenting women. And Elm House and Sonoma House, which provide um sober living environments for men and women. So you may have heard me say shelter in three or four times. We do have four shelters. Casa de Noche Buena, Schuman Heart House, the Share Center and Safe Place Youth Shelter. Providing eighty-seven beds of shelter in the county. So we're clearly becoming one of the largest shelter providers in the county. So to give you an idea of our impact. Uh, last year we served four thousand six hundred and seventy people from mostly Monterey County. The, the print is a little small. The large blue area is Salinas. Representing uh two thousand four hundred and seventy-seven individuals. The red is Monterey Peninsula. That's one thousand three hundred and eleven individuals. The green is North County, which is, uh, we served two hundred and five individuals. The purple segment of the pie is South County and we served five hundred and sixty individuals. And the small blue, light blue uh segment is other. Hundred and seventeen. And we do see some people from just outside. The county that live in, they're kind of lots of normal, they're serving actually all in this state of county, but they are. Considered in some um circles to be rural Monterey County. Um, to give you an idea of those services by service type. Next slide, please. Oh, there it is. The blue is substance abuse services. So predominantly the services we provide are substance abuse. Well, many of our substance abuse programs are long-term. So people can be involved in a methanol or medication assisted treatment program. For a number of years because of the nature of their substance abuse disorder. Or they can be in residential drug treatment, which could be four to six months and in length. Or even outpatient can be twelve to fifteen weeks. So. They're not one-time, two-time services. They're fairly intensive services. Um, our mental health services is represented by the red pie. Um, and that consists primarily of outpatient mental health services, but also includes parenting education. Supervised visitation for children and their non-custodial parents and domestic violence intervention and anger management groups. And then the green slice is homeless services. And that was uh three hundred and thirty-three units of service. So the next slide. Gives you a snapshot of homelessness in Monterey County. This is data from the two thousand twenty-four homeless census, or often called the PITCH count and survey. So uh it's just a slice in time. A lot of people consider it to be the tip of the iceberg because it's a count on one day. Where volunteers or mayors go out and have visually made contact. They can't make any assumptions about who's homeless or who's not homeless or make an assumption that there's. Two pairs of shoes outside a tent. There must be two people in the tent. They actually have to see the people. So it's generally considered an undercount. And our number is in two thousand twenty-four was two thousand four hundred and thirty-six. Which um seventy-seven percent of which were unsheltered, or eighteen hundred and eighty-three people. Eight hundred and twenty of those people would be classified as probably homeless, which means they have mental health, the same condition. And then they homeless on a, a number of episodes over the last, like the last two years. Uh, two hundred and twenty-five of them are unaccompanied youth and children. So these are homeless youth living on their own without the benefit of an adult in their life. Three hundred and sixty-six were families constituted of multiple family members and a hundred and forty-six were veterans. So compare that two thousand four hundred and thirty-six to California's number, one hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and forty-one. For California was a reduction in the count. Um, I think most people would think that that's kind of an anomaly because I think we observe that those numbers are increasing. But again, this is just a slice of time and a count on that one day. For Monterey County was a slight increase over the previous census of twenty twenty-two. And in Delray Oaks, your number has been rising, but small, small number still. Zero were counted in two thousand nineteen, two in two thousand twenty-two and fourteen in two thousand twenty-four. Next slide. So here's some statistics for Delray Oaks and what we provided in two thousand twenty-four. By service type, you have two individuals from your um zip code. Who received eight hundred and seven units of counseling service in our mental health programs. And twenty-three individuals in our substance abuse programs who received five thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven. Units. So total twenty-five individuals for six thousand six hundred and forty-four units of service. You might wonder what a unit of services in that varies by program. For example, uh, in substance abuse, if it was outpatient, it would be one outpatient individual session or group session. In a residential program, it would be one day, uh, what, one bed day, we call them. Uh, in mental health, it was uh most likely one individual therapy session. So eight hundred and seven therapy sessions. So um. Our approach to providing um homeless services is called rapid rehousing. So we've put a lot of effort into trying to house people permanently as quickly as possible. To do that, we operate the shelters. Uh, but we provide intensive case management and housing navigation services. We're actually. Uh, housing navigation is just a form of case management that focuses on housing. Um, and we also have um pots of money that we use to assist people with security deposits, rental assistance. Um, moving costs, um, housing application fees, which can be as much as fifty to seventy-five dollars per application, non-refundable. That's a lot of money. We don't have a lot of money, especially if you have to apply multiple times. Um, and that's provided at the four shelters that I mentioned earlier. So that's pretty much what we do in a nutshell. Um. We're happy to be of service to the community and always changing our service rate of need, emerging needs. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. I'll start with council members. Councilmember Shirley.
Yeah, thank you, Robin, for coming to share um the services you provide, which so important. Um, I, I, I teach at MC. I know many of our students also use your services. So, um, so thank you. Uh, I, I do appreciate that there's a cross over between mental health, substance abuse and abuse and homeless services. I, I would imagine that you have people who use multiple of those services. I was just wondering, like, so if someone. How, how does someone come about your services? Is it through debates? Hear about it? How do, how do you get your clients essentially?
Uh, they come from multiple sources. First of all, people are self-referred. They don't need to have a formal referral. They come from their um places of worship. From police departments, from school districts, from social services, from probation, from the courts. From the health department, specifically behavioral health, or typically behavioral health. So um, from other um nonprofit agencies, we receive referrals and make referrals. Storehouse, Suntree Center, Salvation Army, the Food Bank. So really, we are. Uh, well, that was in the community and collaborating, partnering with all of those um. Organizations that I mentioned that are just cast as white events. We can, we create, thank you so much.
I hope our police services are aware, our police are aware of all these services so they can be telling people about them. So um. Again, thank you so much. I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Louie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Robin, for uh sharing uh the organization. Uh, to us here in the council. And please uh relay uh my appreciation to your team. Uh, for your important role that you do here in our community and for certainly Delray Oaks community as well. Uh, I just have one question, uh, because you, you've been helping a lot uh for our community. But my question would be, how can we, as a city or as a community, as even individuals, that help your organization?
Thank you. Um, I'm glad to say, I'm sorry that I did this. You gave me a great opportunity to thank the city for their support. You make an annual contribution and through your membership in the JPA, and we really appreciate that. We are a nonprofit agency, so members of the public are likely to donate. That's also very much appreciated. We're trying to increase um our community philanthropy because we can't rely on government sources of um revenue. Um, if you qualify the sword, you die by the sword. So we try not to make any assumptions that. We're always going to be on the receiving end of government funding. Plus government funding, they're really big pays for rate. So we do have to do hundreds. Um, that's just, I just want to thank you and I want to thank Jeremy, our current representative. And I want to thank Pat, our former representative. Remember them, Mr. Gordon. They did a great job for us. He's continuing to do a great job for us.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go to our representative, councilmember Howie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Robin alluded to, yes, I have the distinct privilege of being the city's representative on Community Human Services as the vice chairman of the board. on community human services as the vice chairman of the board, and also serve on personnel committee. Um, Robin, uh I don't have any questions, as I am well immersed in the goings-on of community human services and all the beautiful work we do, but I just want to thank you on behalf of the, the council and the community for coming here tonight and um really familiarizing ourselves, the community, with the breadth of the work that we, that we do there, and how very important it is. Um, and in response to the statistics that you cited, you know, we have the benefit in that um we uh live in what is a fairly idyllic community. We've got a special place here in Delray Oaks. And it's easy to assume that uh these conditions and the people that suffer from them are far removed and perhaps absent. But as the statistics have shown, it's actually not just a regional, but a very local um issue that needs to be addressed. And just overall, I am very pleased to uh be part of the solution for so many people in need that are otherwise underserved. Um, as Robin mentioned, we did receive a certificate of appreciation for our involvement to the Dark Powers uh agency, and I would also like to uh Pat accompany, Pat, Patricia, Lintel accompanied me this evening. I wanted her to be part of this because she really was the inspiration for me early on as a planning commissioner and fledgling councilman, uh I would, and just as a member of the public, I would uh listen to the council report out, and I heard of all the beautiful work she was doing um uh in conjunction with many members of the community. One of the stories was we did the T-shirt packs with uh Ms. Ragsdale Crown in there.
Yes, Cam Shirley too.
Right, and you know, supplying the hygiene products and essentials to uh the those in being, and, and I just thought that that was so impactful and just such a wonderful way to uh to pay it forward as a, as person, as a human being, and then, and, and now in a fit, in an efficient capacity. So uh thank you again for your presentation tonight, and uh look forward to seeing you in the next meeting. Thank you.
All right, uh thank you, Robin, for the presentation, and also thank you to Jeremy and Pat being our representatives, uh both past and present, and also the community involvement with Susan and Kim. Um, thank you so much for that. What I'd like to do is take it out to the public. If you have any questions or comments that you would like to make, please feel free to do so.
Sure, can I have a speaker?
Absolutely.
Hi, uh great, great presentation, I think that. How, how um well-served are our youth with respect to the beds you mentioned, like the A-8, the new one that's coming online? Is that meeting need? Are we still way below need? Like, do you have some sense for how far we have to go to really serve our community?
So I believe the ones we're serving are being well-served. Our, our programs are um very efficient. Um, we get good outcomes and results in terms of placing people in housing, meaning their immediate needs resolving immediate crises, making them the food and resources. Unfortunately, the need is greater than um the resources. Our two family and women's shelters have waiting, it's a combined waiting list with about two hundred and fifty people, we set a centralized waiting list. Um, the Share Center in Salinas has a waiting list of about two hundred. Our youth shelter in Monterey has capacity, so um the uh that is one area, we like to reach more kids, but kids that are unaccompanied are, are it's difficult to establish trust with them, so we do, we do serve quite a bit and shoot outreach, and we we're usually running out of about two, there's a three-quarters capacity. And then when the weather's nice, the kids kind of prefer to sleep in the park or outdoors, which is, which is not safe, but that's. I noticed one of our former board members a lot of miles, saying thank you a lot. Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm sitting here thinking of how amazed I am at Community Human Services, all the variety of services you offer to to the residents in uh in our uh our county, and it's a very well-run organization. I'm really very proud to have served on board with Pat. And um I continue to be involved and speak all the time, very highly of Community Human Services. I feel very close still to everyone there, so thank you so much to everyone, to the administration and your staff. You do a wonderful job. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, Pat?
Yes, I just wanted to tell Robin and everybody how much I enjoyed serving on the board. The Community Human Services does so much for our community. And while I'm still a board member, and Jeremy, who was serving for office, he said, if I win, I want to be on the board of Community Human Services. So there he is. But thank you for all you do, Robin. Thank you, Cam. Pleasure.
And you know the members of the public?
I just want her comment. I want to put a plug in for like the most fun event on the peninsula is the Women's Ball. So um I, I would, I would plug only women. I know last time we haven't been there, but um it's a super fun event, and um I hope everyone, everyone attends. It's just been a great, a great time, so thank you.
Thank you again, Robin, for your presentation, and a lot of thank you as well for your service. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the council wants? Oh, none.
Um, Mayor, uh I can do it, it was uh this one item.
Yeah, which item is it? Okay, uh item A1?
Yes, okay, the minutes.
Okay, any other items to hold? Any items from the public that you would like to see pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, seen none. Go back to the council, and the item being hold is the August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four City Council Meeting Minutes.
Yes, uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just would like to have a very uh sure, uh very minor uh uh edit to the minutes, and it's gonna be under the public comment from the presentation from the city. And uh uh it was mentioned there in uh name Jean Clark, but uh it, it should be John Boles. That's all.
It's uh which Jean is it again?
Uh, John Boles, B-O-L-E-S. Uh, thank you so much, dear Karen.
Okay, so uh so vote on that. Item, all in favor of that change? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, and uh regarding the rest of the consent agenda, I, I should have got a motion on that, I'm sorry. So uh let's go back to item uh one A.
All, all of, all of the we um approved the consent with the.
Okay, you like a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none of I, none opposed? We'll move on into the next item, which is old business. I saw Denise back there somewhere. Denise Duffy has an update on our housing element status, she just got that. She just got that. Should be right back. City Manager. Okay, um if, if the council has uh no issue with it, we can move on to new business and then come back to old. Okay, the new uh business item is approve the resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, authorizing city manager to ex- execute a memorandum of understanding to the county of Monterey for the tobacco retail licensing and administration of enforcement services, city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So this shouldn't come as any surprise to anybody, but uh before each night's approval of resolution, as Mayor said, which would be to approve a memorandum of understanding with the county of Monterey. Uh, the MOU will help us and help the county manage and enforce tobacco retail licenses here in Delray Oaks. As you all obviously know, uh Monterey County recently passed an ordinance in the last few years, uh regulating tobacco licenses. Uh, they made a concerted effort to get all the local governments in the county to do the same uh so that we could enforce consistently around the county. Uh, so in January, you all approved adoption of an ordinance uh to, to a tobacco uh tobacco retail license ordinance, uh that was done specifically to mirror the county's ordinance. Um, and so now this is the next step. Uh, the, the ordinance was uh was important uh because it'll help, it'll help us, it'll help county, it'll help other local governments uh in achieving some uh important uh regional health goals, uh the not the least of which would be working with the Blue Zones group uh in their efforts to cut down on secondhand smoke exposure, uh whether that comes from cigarettes or e-cigarettes or marijuana. Uh, but it also helps uh with our aims to reduce access tobacco and tobacco and vaping products in our community. Uh, the MOU, we're a small organization, we don't have the, the the resources or the experience to uh do the work that the county does for us on, on our behalf. So this MOU gives them the ability, delegates the authority to them to collect, claim the taxes, and then the tax money will be utilized to help offset their costs for the administration and enforcement uh of the retail licensing, but also to make sure that all of our businesses that sell tobacco products are complying with regulations and, and laws. Um, as for the fees, you all know that we're doing an update to our master fee schedule right now, so we will be including this in our new updated master fee schedule. Uh, but just to reiterate, the taxes don't come to us, the taxes are collected at the county level, and they keep them uh the health department. Uh, so staff encourages.
Okay, I'll take it to the council first, council member Shirley.
Um, I have a question about um our tobacco retailers. How are they gonna find out about this? Does the county reach out to them? Do we reach out to them?
Uh, yeah, we'll reach out, and we don't have to. We'll, we'll reach out to them with the county, yeah, we'll make the we'll explain the program to them and the enforcement and the power of the program, which is all that.
Okay, and, and the, those fees will begin um at the beginning of the calendar year, is that, they, so they pay them every year?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that right now.
Um, yeah, I, again, I'm really happy for doing this because part of their outreach is to make sure that they have um their reducing um tobacco use, and so um yeah, no, I'm very happy to have heard, going through this, so.
All right, Vice Mayor Louie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would just like to thank uh John and the staff for all your hard work with this and for moving this forward. Yeah, thank you.
All right, council member Howie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have no questions or comments. Thank you for uh your efforts on this, Mr. City Manager, and I support this actually.
Okay, with that, I'll take it out to the public. Are there any public comments regarding this item? Okay, seen none. I'll bring it back to the council, but I have a motion to approve.
So.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second by council member Shirley, all in favor?
Aye.
None of the votes, motion passes? We'll go back to item seven A, now that I see Denise in the back there. Uh Denise, if you can come on up. Where's all yours?
Um, members of the, this mayor, this council, and the audience here, to write up here the discussion, that is a running consult for the city, uh the Housing Element Update Stat Report. It's a, it's a short report, just to give you an opportunity to um hear where we are and hear about our progress, we hope to bring the um final revision to you tonight, but the uh city manager felt that strongly that we needed to get a little bit more review done at the city level, and then have an opportunity to have the document presented, be available for a couple of weeks prior to actually, uh so that's the plan overall. Um, what we have been working on in the last few months, as really going back and forth with HCD on a number of the revisions uh to the housing element, specifically responding to the letters. Uh, there's a great discussion regarding homelessness, having um discussions, adding policies. We've been back and forth with HCD staff, they have been very minimal to the next steps for us and for providing information. There, we still uh are hoping to get another program for them, example, unless they can share it back, from back and forth, so we'll wait until that next week. The um city manager and city now have all the draft uh track changes version of the housing element. Um, and it's, it's under thorough review, and then the longest section is um firmly further fair, firmly simply further fair housing. Uh, we're working on that to get to the city back to next week. Um, with that, everything will be compiled. Um, and we'll be having waiting, probably have an interview with HCD staff, and then HCD has authorized us and wants us to put in an informal document in. With that benefit, if I'm in an informal document, is that we have opportunity to go back and forth um so that they actually review within the context of all the requirements of the housing element, what they would want us to continue to do, to make revisions, and um and we will, instead of having another formal letter, we'll be making those changes, and then that would be another version we bring to for actual adoption. Um, so this, there's no um formal document that you'll be adopting before it goes to HCD. It's, it's the second revision. It's the, the council adopted the fifth cycle housing element, certified the EIR, and approved the housing element and rezoning in October of twenty twenty-three. That created the um regional housing needs assessment, providing the rezoning that was required to have um all of the zoning and residential land available that's needed to meet the arena, those for fifth and sixth cycles. So that was a key key benchmark and the key success of twenty twenty-three. Secondarily, we came right back in December twenty twenty-three, the city council adopted the six-cycle housing element itself. So that's the six-cycle housing element, I went to HCD for review, where we got a, a letter that has a number of different comments and revisions to it that I've requested, and we're still working on that. That's the revised document, is what you'll see coming up and up uh with, end of September, October, actually. And um we'll be posted on the website, available for review. Um, and the thought is actually to have either a special meeting to discuss it, or uh for me to have office hours, or people can come in and just after having a chance to have it see the document, just ask questions, that and what a lot of different jurisdictions do that, and then every individual time, that they can ask all the questions that they want to your client and consultant, and um and that will be also occurring in October. For that, I'm really here just to give you the short status report. There's no staff report associated with this. We've got a staff report available for the next time when we're actually showing you the documents, so just wanted to use that as a take. You have anybody a chance to ask any questions? And if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, just a little bit. So um, so what Denise is really telling you all is we're, we were pushing, 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 trying to get this done by this month, um but we wanted to slow it down a little bit in conjunction with uh housing and community development, uh really kind of at their prompting uh of uh working with them a little bit more on an informal review process uh and getting their input on this. Uh, because we, we don't want to bring this back to you guys multiple times. We don't want to rush it, get it to you before we get input from HCD. And then we send it to them, and we get another six, seven-page letter back with inconsistencies that we have to address, and then come back and begin. So we're trying to get this as complete as possible in the hopes that when we do send it to HCD, it's going to be certified in one take. So that's why we're slowing it down a little bit, giving me, giving our staff time to review the work that Denise and our staff have done, and then be in contact with HCD and and getting some input on uh from them on some of this stuff, because some of the stuff is new to us, this uh, you know, a, a, a firming firming further air housing, I can't even remember.
Air base.
Yeah, air base, that's what we call it. Uh, you know, it's new, and there's a lot of new laws, and we have a lot of new housing laws. We need to make sure that we have addressed all of those, uh because if we don't, then we have to go back and do it, just like it said last month with the A-8 ordinance. We submitted that in twenty twenty-one, and three years later, we got a renewed letter back from HCD finally on our twenty twenty-one ordinance. And it's outdated now because they changed the numbering in the, in the state level, and so now we have to update our ordinance to match the changes in the state level, uh because things change, and things have changed since, just since last December when we adopted this, so I want to make sure out of all the eyes, cross all the teeth, before we come bring it to you all, so uh this most efficient way possible, so thank you, Denise.
And just uh one thing, um it's very common in all of our jurisdictions, locally. And just uh one thing, um it's very common in all of our jurisdictions locally and of a state that there's many iterations of the housing element for compliance. Of the adoption is one thing, that's a great um success. But uh compliance is one of the need. At the end of the day, there is no time requirement to have it done by the end of this year at all. Because again, we already have rezoning that was confirmed in twenty twenty three, within the deadline of a six cycle housing element, and that has not been available, so we don't have a shortfall. Not subject to the builder's revenue. But be born. And we have no further questions.
Okay, thank you for the update, and city manager, thanks for the clarifications with that as well. I'll start with council member Sherwood.
Denise, um I said before, I I really don't want it when you come to the council without any kind of written report for us. It's very hard to process everything that you say without having a document to be able to go back and read it. Um I I understand you're trying to be efficient, but it, you know, it doesn't serve our residents, it doesn't serve us.
Uh I can put a document on the website while it's a staff report in front of it.
Okay.
As I said again, we didn't really want to present staff reports without having the document, so.
Yeah, it's it's just that it it sort of was like things are being settled out like behind closed doors without us being able, I mean, I know you're, I understand you're trying to get it to a place where um HCD is gonna accept it. But I just feel like um in some ways, we're not being open to um to those iterations you mentioned, different iterations.
And I would like to just respectfully disagree. You won't be able to see the iterations until it's made public to a full document. That's when you'll get the chance to review it. So um I I really don't want the impression out there for the public at all that the city or our firm or anyone would do such a thing, we'll try and put something behind it. This is a process, we've had fifteen meetings about the housing element. And so I think it's important to be very, very specific and say that that's not happening.
Well, we haven't seen anything since April.
Right, and that means you don't have the full document, it's it's a, I'm happy to talk about this separately, but it's um it takes a while to get this done. I think one of the things that you mentioned in April is how long is it's gonna take if we have you know, um question, thinking, well, we can get it done in this time period. It's a lot of work.
And I, and I understand it does a lot of work. You're, but you're also the only city that hasn't adopted uh uh housing element that's not compliant.
That's not correct.
Lo- locally.
That's not correct.
I I just looked at HCD website right before I came in.
The city of Monterey does not have it?
So if it's adopted, it there there are any compliance. So it it doesn't matter. I I just, I really like, I'd like this to go to the planning commission. But like, I'd like the public to have as many, you know, opportunities to see this as possible.
Well, maybe it's a start of that information. The other reason for debate is to say, how would you like to have the public for one? So the two things that I talked about was having a joint planning commission council and also having office hours.
I think, I think for me, you're asking if you have a joint planning commission and city council, it would be great, I think. Um well, we can all hear each other's questions and that helps maybe like other things, so how you.
I'll repeat again what I said, so that it's clearer and and slower. The idea is to have the document available, provided informally to HCD as we've been doing back and forth on sections like that, just provide the entire document. With that in front of the planning commission and council, but also on the website. And that has been, as was requested last time, make sure you have added the time to review it. You've always sit down and discuss it. Not a presentation of what it is, it's here. It's been here on the, on the website. Now you have a chance to take a look at it. So that's the concept, and I probably wasn't very clear about it before, to have for the next month process. And so I would suggest probably that the will of the council to have a special meeting at the planning commission and council, so that we can sort of present what's been changed. Um and that's part of the staff report we'll discuss specifically. Probably, we can't assess that the changes aren't to be seen in front of you, so I feel like I'll be.
So before we see that, the 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 reports, or not the staff report, but the actual draft, so that we can read it. Sure. How much time are we going to have before the meeting?
Um again, I'm sorry, it's probably in here two weeks. What I was thinking was probably the appropriate amount of time. And um so the October timeframe, you have an October twenty second meeting. I would suggest we have something separate from that. And they want the twenty seconds specifically. And I'll um outline the dates again. I'll just put it up on the website so you'll see it. The idea is working on it. It's a lot of process, it's a lot of back and forth. And um we is going to be going through this iteration again. Most jurisdictions do not get one document adopted, revised, and then have HCD blessed it. Uh that's the informal approach that John uh City Manager heard him talking about.
Uh Vice Mayor Louie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Denise, thank you for uh sharing some updates about the home uh the housing element. And uh I really appreciate all those work and all of our staff uh with all of this housing element and and once this is over, I'll be the one to go throw an update party. Then last night was still, uh so uh so I know uh we'll, we'll be, we'll be there, you know, we'll get there. So so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That is the sweetest thing I heard today.
All right, council member Hal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I will reserve questions and comments, other than thank you for all of your hard work on this. Uh until uh.
Okay, thank you. I'll take it out to the public. Any public comments, questions regarding this update? Okay, seen none. Denise, I just had uh one question. Uh do you see any individual items that you're working on that has potential with HCD to, you know, create a major modification to what you've already done?
I think if you look at the letter that was provided, your packets on March and April, and they've been presented, and I think it was another packet, you'll see that they have a number of different questions and requests for revisions, policies, and programs, mostly programs. They'd like to expand the program of the ADU that presented that in in April. They would like to um have more force on um monitoring of ADUs, and if you'll read the articles about housing elements in California and the, you know, lessons learned. You'll see that most jurisdictions on HCD are now, you have to provide the information and inspire the evidence for the information. You gotta provide the monitoring, if you're saying you're gonna do an action, there's strongly requesting that you really identify what are the specifics you're doing and how you're doing it. And might even report on it. So it's much more on the monitoring side of it. And then secondarily, I'd say that they wanted to really get more information that if you say, if we're going to have a rezoning which we need to accomplish, how are you going to ensure that you have a then affordable housing bill? Um if, as we know, in the council element law, you don't have to build the housing, but they like to have HCD and it shows in the letter, would like to have more information of how are you going to, how is the city going to ensure that you're, you're moving forward towards this, you take these steps. And so our June, uh the adoption in June of the exclusive negotiation agreement, or the ERNA, what the acronym is um with the uh selected developer act of sure plus land act, that's something that we're writing up, and it's important to put that in the document to show steps. They want to see the steps of any restraint, removing any restraint in the house. So I think those are the primary ones. So there's a number of different ones that we've added um that I would really like to more up to date to talk to about it, you know. Budge out, maybe you see it. I also appreciated the lady uh presentation this evening, because since they've asked us to put more resources, how are we going to firmly further fair housing? How, what are your resources that you have to be able to address homelessness in the city? And how are you, you know, how are you working with these resources together? In this small community, it's very hard to get them to understand that this is a really community based. It's not like any other cities. The communities come together to help their citizens here. So um there's a number of different just little questions about the firmly further fair housing that's um although they're not major pro- program changes.
Okay, it it sounds like you have the information to meet the requirements. Is there anything that you see that you're lacking from the either the uh city council, you know, from us that that we can provide you or from the staff?
No, I think we've been working together very well, and that's change, I mean, things that we don't.
Yeah, no, we got clear direction the last time this was presented and adopted, and then we got the letter back, and then the letter to you all, and then we got clear direction. Uh what programs you want to see, how you wanted us to respond to that letter, and how you want us to modify the document. So that's the work that Denise and her staff have been doing. Uh there is no timeframe yet. That has to happen, and she's working with HCD to make sure that the work that she's doing with your direction is being done in a way that HCD is gonna agree with. So then when we present that, then you all will give us your comments on that, whether I think we met the direction and whether or not we met the intent of the law at the state, that they can make changes.
Okay, and and it seems as though the joint planning council meeting has worked well for us, and I appreciate you making that suggestion, Kim. So I think, you know, we're kind of looking at that approach uh once again. It seems like it's working well. So um you know, we'll talk with the city manager, but that might be the 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 best way to move forward on this. Um well, I really appreciate the update, Denise. There's no requirements from uh the council uh to approve anything at this point, so I'll move on to the next item. Uh which is uh staff report, and I'll start with city manager.
Say, Mayor, I just want to talk about a couple of things that everybody sees going on. Uh first of all, it's Ortag. It's, in case you all leave your homes occasionally, you'll notice that the work is really going, and they're making a lot of great progress. Uh you'll see that Granite Rock has has staked out and fenced off the construction area pretty much from safe way back to safe way, all the way up to Frog Pond. Um so one thing, I'll make a plea for the chief here, please respect the construction zone. When you see signs up that say trail is closed, or if you see uh tape across the trail, that doesn't mean, well, I go on the trail every day, so I can rip the tape off and continue down the trail. Because that's not safe for you, it's not safe for your animals that you're walking. But it's also not safe for our officers who have to respond, and for the construction guys who are working, because when, when guys are moving heavy machinery, they need to be focused on the job at hand, which is moving the heavy machinery in the safe ways. If they now have a a a pedestrian walking through a path who is not paying attention and shouldn't be there, now their attention is is drawn away from the action that they're doing, and that's not safe, it's not safe for the resident, the pedestrian who's going through, it's not safe for anybody. Uh and so the uh project manager uh on the project has asked me to make that plea to the community because we have had several residents uh continuing to walk through the construction site and continuing to walk through to access Frog Pond. So if there are closure signs, please respect those. Um as far as the instructions going, you'll see uh last night, I think some people saw that there were some lights out. Uh I don't think there's going to be any more night work. There was potential for seven nights of night work. Uh the mayor did some great work with Tamsi and pressured them a lot and worked, worked on them on my behalf, but I didn't have to do it. It's nice for me to do the night complex once in a while, uh so thanks for that. Um I think we got it down to three nights, but I think actually they were able to get it down just last night. Please don't hold me to that, because construction realities change on the ground, but the last I was told was last night, it was the only night work that will occur in our, if it should happen during the day. Uh but what you will see is now that the lanes have been modified and wind and changed, that's so that they can work on part of the underpass and not impact traffic heavily and not have to do one-way lane stops. But they will uh be reducing the speed limit, so please pay attention to the speed limit signs. Uh they will change occasionally, and they will continue to go down and then back up at night, I think. Uh but please just pay attention, be extra careful once you're dragging through there uh for your own safety, but also for the safety of the workers. Uh we'd like for them all to go home at the end of the day as well. Uh and then if you have any questions, Tamsi is the first person to call. Uh are are you welcome to call us, and we'll give you whatever the latest information is that we've received from Tamsi. Um also, you all probably noticed, uh if you've left, that we're doing the CalFire wildfire fuel reduction work all along the area here. And now we started on the other side of the canyon, on the other side of the park. Uh I understand that it can be emotional to see trees being trimmed and to to see clearing and be able to see through things that you haven't been able to see through before. It's a little startling, it's a big change. Um and I understand that. Uh just know that it's important. This is, this is critical for us to keep the community safe. And to protect everybody from the potential wildfire. You've seen how these things can get out of control in neighboring communities. Um and it's more than just a loss, potential loss of life or property. Uh i- if if a wildfire were to occur in the community or near the community, um then we're all at risk of losing our fire insurance for our homes as well. So so this is important work. Um just know we're not taking out live trees, we're not taking out live oaks. Uh we may be trimming some up to get some clearance off the ground from the underbrush. Uh but we're really focusing on dead ball and dead trees and diseased trees. To get them out, that makes the trees that are alive, gives them more space and healthier. And then most of the stuff that's underneath, the undergrowth, is really ivy, which is an invasive species, and poison oak, which I know we all like have a little less of than I thought that is. Uh so um in a few years, everything's gonna grow back. Within a few months, you guys will, it it'll, it'll start to grow back and it'll start to look like it did. Uh but if you have any questions about the work, uh don't hesitate to call us and let us know. If you see Ron out driving, feel free to wave him down and ask him questions. Uh the the work here along Veverity, I believe, is gonna be, we're pushing to get that done by the end of this week. And then hopefully next week, we'll be starting down by Work Memorial and moving up uh along Casanova and Ralston, Ralston up there, and then up towards the airport as well. Uh and that's gonna be a lot of heavy work with cranes and everything, so. Uh again, thank you for that.
Thank you, city manager. Um we have other staff reports and correspondence that are within the packet. Our next meeting is October twenty second at six P M. I want to let folks know that there is a celebration of life for Bill on the nineteenth of October from three to five, and there's some literature in the table right outside uh in the foyer. Please, on your way out, take a look at that. And with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor and memory of council member Bill Ragsdale Crump.